Let's do it that way, just to be complete. So I'd like to call to order this reconvening of the Committee of the Whole of the City of Urbana. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Hershey?
Here.
Councilmember Colasetti? Councilmember Colasetti? Councilmember Bishop?
Here.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Here.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Thank you.
And so, Mary Alice, I would be glad to hand over the chair to you after wielding it yesterday.
Thank you very much, and thank you for handling everything yesterday. I appreciate it. We are starting on a new business, and we are on the third one. I'm going to read all three at the same time because there'll be a presentation that covers all three of them. So the ones that we're going to be talking about at the moment are ordinance number 2025-06-019, an ordinance approving the fiscal year 2025-2026 annual budget, and ordinance number 2025-06-020, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number 10 for fiscal year 2024-2025 estimate, and ordinance number 2025-06-021, an ordinance amending the city code Chapter 2 taxation by adding Article X, sorry, Article 10, municipal grocery retailer's occupation tax and municipal grocery service occupation tax. Elizabeth, or is it Mayor?
Actually, the Mayor's going to start this off.
Mayor?
All right, thank you. Hopefully, I can do this, but I just want to first acknowledge just everyone who, you know, has given input and spoke, you know, out into this. I want to make it very clear in saying that I hear you, I appreciate you, and I am looking forward to, you know, to again, working alongside of everyone, you know, as we move things forward. You know, everyone here understands the realities that we are facing. You know, the President has made, you know, cities like ours a target, unfortunately, but that's due to us now, you know, us refusing to participate in his immigration raids because at the end of the day, we'll never turn our friends and neighbors over to him and his vices. You know, we're going to stand firm, we're going to continue to do that. But, you know, in my mind frame, you know, to get through this, you know, we're going to need to preserve, you know, every revenue source that we can. And that was truly my thought process as we, you know, as I received information and as we, you know, went into this, you know, this preparation, which is why, you know, we, I felt that it was necessary that we be one of the, you know, over 200 cities that, you know, in the state of Illinois that proposed the continuation of the grocery tax that was mentioned, you know, last night multiple times. You know, public safety is not about choosing one approach, you know, over another. I've said this from day one, it's not either or, it's a, it's in my opinion, it's a yes and. You know, and I felt like the budget, this budget, you know, presentation reflected that. You know, we are providing the resources needed to staff our department and to move things forward, you know, in regards to our alternative response model that we all know that I am in absolute favor of. That I believe wholeheartedly that that is what Urbana needs and deserves. But I also wanted to, you know, to provide some context, you know, some context to, you know, the proposal in this budget. It's not simply, you know, the police department asking for three officers plus a sergeant and me simply signing off on it, right? What you see in that budget that's being presented was a result of compromise and us finding that middle ground. You know, the original ask that a lot of folks know or may not know, the original ask, I believe, was something upward of 15 positions. That was reduced to 14, that was then reduced to, I believe, seven, right? And finally, after some really tough conversations, we landed at the four, you know, that's being included in this budget. But with that, I want folks to understand that I've made it clear to our police department, Chief and I have had plenty of conversations, and I've mentioned that if this is passed, you're now staffed, so there's no excuses, right? We will be in these neighborhoods, we will be supporting our at-risk youth, we will seek the success of the alternative response model, we will be partnering with community organizations such as Dream, such as First Followers, we will be partnering with UNCC, right? There absolutely are no excuses for us to not be building the trust in the community, right? To not build the presence and the relationships, especially with our most vulnerable spaces. You know, I heard a lot of input about, you know, the past. And truth of the matter is, I'm not here to rehash the past, I can't change what took place before I took office, you know, but what I can tell you is what's going to happen moving forward, as far as I'm concerned with me in this seat, and that's accountability, community focus, and results. And, you know, I often say that you can't argue the work, you know, so I just want people to understand, I'm a few weeks into this administration, and I genuinely feel that we are on the right track to delivering the vision that the community, the folks of the City of Urbana, needs, wants, and deserves. I'm just asking that our community, first off, have patience with me, right? And truth of the matter is, just, I ask that you trust me until you can. You know, I know folks up here have heard me say that a lot, I know the city staff has heard me say that a lot. Trust me until you can, until I show you that you can't. Just trust me and work alongside with, work alongside me rather than against. We can get this thing done, and I am looking forward to working with you all to ensure that we do, so, thank you.
Good evening. So we have three ordinances before you tonight, and two are related to the budget process that we do every year. And the third one, which Elizabeth will talk about, is the ordinance approving the continuation of the 1% grocery rate tax. So the first ordinance would adopt the 2026 proposed budget, which was presented on June 2nd, and along with a few changes outlined in the exhibit attached. So this year, we have very few changes from the proposed budget. So what we have here, just a few housekeeping items. And one is to correct an error in the city clerk's budget, and one is moving a piece of equipment to the VERF. And another one is to adjust the allocation for the Economic Development and Planning Manager. And the rest of the items are equipment rebudgets in the VERF, and these are equipment purchases that we could not complete it this fiscal year, and they are being carried forward into fiscal year 26. So these items have minimal impact on the overall budget. And then we have the second ordinance, which is a budget amendment to this year, to this year fiscal year 25 budget. And this ordinance will allow staff to amend the fiscal year 25 budget to reflect the updated estimate from the proposed budget, and also to include all the changes in the exhibit, which is all VERF-free budgets. So this budget complies with the city financial policies by limiting recurrent expenditures to 97.8% of recurring revenues, which is below the 98.5% policy threshold. And then we also maintain a projected unassigned fund balance of about 12.25 million or 25.7% of recurring expenditures, and that is well within our fund balance policy. And with that, I turn over to Elizabeth to discuss the continuation of the grocery tax.
So, as you know, part of the Mayor's proposed budget was a, included a continuation of the grocery tax that the state is ending on December 31st, 2025. The replacement tax would begin then on January 1st, 2026, if this is approved. As a practical matter, if I went to the grocery store on New Year's Eve in 2025 and bought certain items, and then I did the same thing on January 1st, 26, I would see no difference. I would pay the same tax if I bought the same items at the same price. So there's really no difference at the checkout to shoppers. So we're in this, we're in the position of needing to ask to do that, this, because the state elected to eliminate the statewide tax. And I understand why that was the case, but the fact is that the burden of that tax elimination, that decision that was made by the state, fell on local governments all across the state. And now, if we want to continue the existing tax, we're in a position of having to approve an ordinance to do that. At this point, well, as of mid-May, the Illinois Municipal League was keeping track of this, and 212 other cities in Illinois had already passed ordinances continuing the grocery tax. And I'm sure by now that number is higher, I didn't find an update on their website today for mid-June. So as you know, one of the factors we look at as we evaluate revenue options is fairness, which is something we heard a lot about last night. So I do acknowledge that grocery taxes are generally considered regressive, that is, they disproportionately impact lower-income households. However, we did find some really useful information in a study that was published by the Institute of Government and Public Affairs at the University of Illinois. This was published in 2024, as the debate about the grocery tax was going on at the state level. And they did an analysis where they looked at various quintiles of income, so 20%, groups of income levels, and they looked at how much those income groups spend on food at home, which is subject to this tax. They looked at SNAP benefits that those income groups receive, and they did an analysis then to determine how burdened each of those quintiles were by a grocery tax. And their determination, which was based on 2022 data, because that was what was available to them at the time, was that households in the lowest 20% income group pay 0.01% of income as grocery tax compared to 0.04% to 0.08% for other income groups in their analysis. And that study is actually published online, and I think we've linked it to the PDF of the budget, and I think we linked it to this memo as well. So the households in the lowest income group in their analysis paid about $1.60 for a year in grocery taxes. And the highest amount that they estimated households paid in grocery taxes was $85.23 a year. So for us, continuing the grocery tax means $1 million a year that we had, that we expected to continue to receive indefinitely up until the state elected to end that tax. And so, without that new revenue, we would be unable to fund many of the new items that the Mayor strongly believes are needed to best serve our residents. You know, if we did not elect to do the grocery tax, we could talk about some alternatives potentially, but this is consistent with what he has recommended in the proposed budget. So we're happy to answer questions.
Questions? Chris?
So Elizabeth, all right, I'm going to talk about the grocery tax, if you don't mind. How long has Urbana had the grocery tax?
I have to admit, I don't even know, it's certainly been decades. I mean, that tax has been built into state law for as long as I've been working in local government in Illinois, which is 36 years now.
Okay, has it always been, I mean, I imagine there's been a kind of a climb, but has it been around a million, at least recently? Has it been about a million dollars?
So that's a difficult question to answer, even estimating the million dollars is difficult because when the state pays the sales tax revenue to the city, they don't break out this portion as from grocery tax versus other state sales tax. So we had to do a kind of complicated analysis to look at that based on categories that stores are classified into for sales tax reporting purposes. But I think that's a reasonable estimate. It was, I made that estimate with some help from the Department of Revenue. I kind of talked through them about what's the best way to make this, to make an estimate.
Okay, so it's been a million. And what did we do with the state grocery tax? I mean, what did we do with that million? Did it go in the general operating fund?
Correct, as part of the general operating fund.
Okay, and so I'm assuming that we spent the state grocery tax, that million dollars, in some kind of way? I mean, it was, right, okay. And you told, you just told us that the new Urbana grocery tax were to pass same rate and same yield of money, right? As before, okay, so we're...
Well, I mean, sales tax is never the same as before, right? It fluctuates a lot.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's all kinds of buying variables, I understand that. But generally, same rate, and we were hoping and expecting about the same amount of money, right?
Correct.
Okay. So the new, I'm counting, seven new city employees proposed in the budget, the arborist position in public works, the two new positions in legal, the new human resources generalist, and the three new police patrol officers. And I'm just sticking to the reoccurring ones, I'm leaving the three-year pilot program out of this conversation. And that, it costs about roughly $700,000 for all those positions, and those are reoccurring expenditures forevermore, correct? Or, you know, employees, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, am I understanding this right? Is the $700,000, would that be a new increased expense to the budget?
Correct.
Okay. So we need another extra $700,000, right?
Correct, I mean, the budget numbers fluctuate a lot year to year. I mean, there's a lot happening, revenues grow at different rates, expenses grow at different rates.
Yeah, but this is a new estimated roughly, new $700,000 that we're going to spend, right?
Correct.
Okay. And how are we going to pay for it?
Well, how we'd like to pay for it is to continue the grocery tax, which is revenue that we would have had otherwise.
Okay, but we've had the grocery tax, it's a million, we're going to continue the grocery tax, it's a million. We've been spending the million back here, the state grocery tax. So where, my question is, where's the new revenue to the new $700,000?
So, as you know, the general fund budget is very complicated.
I'm pointing that out.
We have many sources of revenue that grow at different rates. We have many expenditures that grow at various rates. We have, you know, one-time expenditures at various points in time. So what I would say is this, if you step back, like if you think back to the financial forecast, right, we would have had the flexibility to do these things without asking for a revenue increase, if not for the discontinuation of the grocery tax.
Okay, maybe, sorta. Here's where I'm getting confused. So what you wrote on page 16 and February 3rd is that you said, "While the financial outlook suggests some improvement in the fund balance, it remains insufficient to support significant new programs or services such as those anticipated to be proposed by the Alternative Response Task Force without additional funding sources."
Correct, and at that time, we knew the grocery tax was being discontinued.
Okay, so, all right. Okay, so I, let me, the question I'm stumbling over is, if the new proposed Urbana grocery tax is the same rate and raises the same amount of money as the discontinued state grocery tax that Urbana has always received, then where is the increased revenue? And you're answering this as, "We don't need it because, what, the state grocery tax would have covered us, and now we have maybe a local Urbana tax," is that what you're telling me?
Correct, if the state grocery tax had continued, we would not be asking for you to approve this ordinance because we would have had sufficient funds available in the budget to cover this.
Okay, well, several times in the forecast this year, and many times over the years, you keep, we keep coming back. What I'm reading from you is always, "We need revenue increases, we need revenue increases." Are you telling me now we don't need revenue increases?
So generally, we need our revenues to grow over time.
Everybody does, yeah.
And that happens different ways, so you can, sometimes you have kind of natural revenue growth. For example, in a community with a lot of retail, you might just not naturally, as retail develops, you might have a lot of natural revenue growth occurring from that. In this case, so looking back, because we knew when we wrote the forecast that the grocery tax was ending, right? We, I think we knew that when we were working on last year's budget, right? I think we found that out like right at the very end, as, I think that probably passed in like June of 2024. So revenues tend to grow naturally in a healthy economy, so that's part of it. I think we have had some pretty healthy natural revenue growth in some of our other sources. But, yeah, I mean, if the state had not discontinued the grocery tax, we could have recommended these expenditures and not asked for new revenue this year, which would have been an ideal situation.
Right, last question, thank you for everybody's patience. So if we want to do an alternative response to police with staff, with cars, with radios, with training, would we have to raise a tax?
So I don't know how much that alternative response is going to cost, so I can't really...
Yeah, nobody does.
...answer that question. So you did set aside in the budget, and that continues this year, $300,000 on a recurring basis, so that's a start, right? We know that's there and available. In our analysis of the budget, as we go through our kind of complicated budget balancing process and comparing to policy limits, even with these new items included in the budget, we still should have, if everything remains the same, flexibility next year of about $370,000. So we're about $370,000 below our policy limit on recurring expenditure now.
Thank you for your time, good job.
All right, anybody else? Grace?
Thank you, we've got a few questions, just do one or two, if that's okay. Kind of taking a step back, big picture, like with the public hearing memo, that our expected revenues of $78.4 million and expenditures of $93.4 million, is that largely because of bonding in the fire station construction, that we're, it looks like we're overspending by $15 million?
So I'm going to give you, I haven't done a deep dive into that, but generally, when you see that, when we have expenditures higher than revenues, it's normally related to capital improvements, right? So often, in those funds that pay for capital improvements, we'll set aside, we'll put a, you know, kind of consistent amount in there every year, but then there'll be a big project that takes a lot of money. Let me check with Dawn. Yeah, also grants. So there's a lot of grant money that we're actually carrying over, especially CDBG and Home, that was allocated in prior years, but hasn't been spent, that we expect to spend this year, so that's part of it.
Thank you. And then, another question was, in the memo here, there's a VERF fund attached for, I think, the budget amendment for this current year. And I'm just really confused on these numbers, and like the total expenditure nor the ending fund balance seem to be the sum of any of those things listed there. And if not off the top of your head, that's fine, but if we could have some explanation on these different types of squad vehicles and their replacement cycle?
So, so the reason why the fund balance, so you're looking at page 24 in the packet, I think?
31 of our private packet, budget amendment number 10, exhibit.
Okay, I think that's 2024 in what I'm looking at, but... So we only list the items that are changing, right? So the total expenditures and the total ending fund balance don't necessarily tie out to all the items above. We're showing you the total at the fund level. And I don't know if Chief Boone could speak to the life cycle on the squad cars, I believe it's three years. Which seems short, but they're pretty heavily used 24 hours a day.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and if I just have a clarifying question. So you're saying that because not all of the squad vehicles are listed here, just the ones that are changed, right? And that's why it doesn't equal the total fund balance?
Yeah, we would only be listing the ones that are changing.
But why is the sum greater than the fund balance? Like, that would make sense if they were less than what you're listing as the ending fund balance, but it's greater than what you're listing as the ending fund balance?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, we're reducing the budget. So, each, and those are hitting all of them the same general ledger account code, right? So, they're kind of iterative. Like, the, the first line there-
Yeah, that all end in 2-0 are one account, right?
Correct. And, and so, you're, you're hitting the line item multiple times, and then you're bringing that total down, and you're, you're hitting the same line item. You really can't, you can't really total those.
And why do we do new cars every three years? And is that an obligation? I heard average was three to five, industry standard?
So, for us, I think that has worked well for the city of Urbana. There could be, and I don't know when you say "industry standard", if you're talking specifically about police departments. Police vehicles get very heavy use, like relative to other types of vehicles that are in the fleet. And I think there's a big difference between various police departments. I worked in another city where, where their cars weren't always running 24 hours a day, but I think ours are pretty well-used 24 hours a day consistently. They're assigned to somebody who's on patrol.
And could you get back to us probably with what would be a financial impact if we were to replace them on a four-year cycle?
I could. That would probably take some time. I'd have to work with the fleet folks in Public Works. My concern would be that we would see a lot more downtime. The reason, one of the reasons for the short replacement cycle is, we don't really have capacity to have downtime for our squad cars. They have to be ready to go at a moment's notice all the time.
And downtime for maintenance?
Right. If we started having, you know, in the fourth year, we started having, seeing a lot of maintenance problems, and they were out of service, that would be an issue. That would, that would, that could cause issues with patrol being able to respond to calls.
Thank you. And also, just a later piece of information. I'd be curious what average kind of mileage we're hitting at three years on those vehicles?
Yeah, that's probably fairly easy to find out.
Thank you. I have more, but I'll stop there if there's others.
Other questions? James?
All right, thank, thank you for the presentation. I do have a question along the lines of what Chris was asking. What are the other areas that we're forecasting income to grow? So, for example, what's our expectation for the valuation of property going up? Because we don't change our rate, our property tax rate, because we're trying to maintain balance with our colleagues across Wright Street. But the valuation of the property goes up each year, and we get an additional amount from that. And we, there may be sales forecasts, there may be other things that are forecasted in, in the revenue area that are going up. Could you just give us an idea of which are going up and how much?
So, there, there are a lot of revenues in the general fund. We did have, for the 2025 tax levy, we had pretty healthy growth in assessed valuation. I'm gonna say, I don't remember off the top of my head, but it's well over 10%. That's a little complicated because the pension levies pass through the general fund. So, you can see it's going from estimated $6.4 million to $6.9 million. But, but you can't see there how much of that is going to pensions versus how much remains in the general fund to pay for services. You know, food and beverage tax has been doing pretty well. We had budgeted one, about $1.65 million. We're expecting to come in at $2 million and then have a little more growth next year. Let's see, some of the other...
Certainly hope so. If you've seen the cars parked at the yard, you'd expect some increase.
That's a good problem.
And the people at the hotel buying dinner.
Yeah, it looks-
But there are a number of places where revenues are going up. I assume there are a few that are going down.
Yeah, that's always true.
There's some risks that we have based on the craziness of the federal government and what they're doing. So, trying to focus in on one piece of revenue and saying that that's the amount that is, that we're doing things with is kind of ignoring the complexity of the system, right?
I agree.
Okay. That's the sense that I've gotten. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna give people a chance. Otherwise, I will let Grace, I know you had more questions. Anybody else have questions? All right, Grace.
Thank you. These next ones are maybe just kind of confirming, and also gonna ask like where they are in the budget, and totally understandable if that's a follow-up question versus all these dense pages. I wanted to just confirm that we still have $100,000 for the SUN Sustaining Urbana Neighborhoods Grant, and where that could be found in this document.
Could you say that again? I didn't catch that.
The SUN Sustaining Urbana Neighborhoods Grants. We had $100,000 reoccurring expenditure for that grant program, and wanted to confirm if and where in that budget this included.
Correct. I think we've been carrying that now for a couple of years, and it's in the Public Works budget. I believe it was in the Sustainability budget, but we can confirm that.
Thank you. And I had some other kind of similar questions like that. Same thing about the Alternative Response Program, confirming if and where we have $300,000 per year reoccurring expenditures for that program.
So, that one's a little easier because we created a separate program in the budget for it. It was big enough that we wanted to call that out. Yeah, you can see that if you look at page 130 in the budget book. There's $505,100 in there. So, that includes, I think there was $150,000 kind of to start up the program that we're gonna, that we're carrying over. There's 300, a little over 300,000 recurring because we grew that a little bit with our baseline budget. And then we carried over into this budget, the amount that was remaining from the Barry Dunn purchase order when we terminated that contract to be able to pay for a consultant for the Alternative Response Task Force.
Okay, so, we have, thank you so much for pointing that out. So, we have $505,000 total in that fund, and we had 3,000 of that as yearly reoccurring. $150 was kind of one-time things we put in last year. And then, that extra 55 remaining Barry Dunn that will go to the next facilitator, right?
Yeah, that, that's roughly correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then, last of that type of question was the same thing for community service grants, if that is back down to $300,000 this year. And rollover too, because I believe we did not spend, I guess it's maybe not all signed yet, but looks like we will not spend all of the $500,000 from this current year and rolling some over potentially.
So, on page 129, under a program called Social Services, we have $525,109. And that would be the funds for community service grants. And, and I, it appears to me, looking at these numbers, that they intend to spend everything that was in the current budget. Maybe not spend it, but at least have it encumbered and under contract, which is why they're showing the estimated amount is the same as the budgeted amount. So, once it, once it's under contract and they have a purchase order, that will automa, automatically carry over into the next budget.
And is there, I mean, I'm pleased to see $525,000. Is that because of some rollover? Was that an increase this year? Because from my recollection, it had been $300,000. And last year, we increased it $200,000 just for this current year. So, was this just increasing at $5,000 every year reoccurring, $500,000?
So, we'll have to dig into that. But my recollection is, we had a $300,000 annual amount, and as part of the budget last year, I think there was, there were two increases. There was a recurring, part of the increase was recurring, and part of it was one-time. And so, the recurring part of that would then continue. Whenever we call something recurring in the budget, that continues on into future budgets.
Okay, thank you. Like I said, I'm pleased to see that increase, and just curious if we're set for that every year, or if that was some rollover or any other one-time stuff. Okay, other question that makes sense, if you need to get back to us, on the annual cost for three additional patrol officers. My guess is about $400,000 per year. Also, if you divide up the startup cost, I know we saw in the presentation last night that we had 367 per year, and then 207 one-time. And if you divided that out over a few years in vehicle replacement, roughly $400,000 for the three new officers per year.
I, you just lost me there.
I was trying to factor in the one-time startup costs. That $207,000 one-time startup cost for the three officers, because we're gonna need two extra vehicles that we'll also have to replace every three years. So, I was trying to make that into kind of a, a guesstimate of an annual cost divided over time.
So, the annual cost that we would need to fund the replacement of those three vehicles is included in the $367,000. So, we, we built that in already.
Okay, so the 207 one-time is training, and the first-time purchase of vehicles, are vehicles in that 207?
Vehicles are in the 207.
But not replacement, just the first-time purchase?
Correct, because the replacement cost is a recurring cost.
And then, I was wondering if we could go back to something that was kind of brought up last night about the incentives for hiring and retention. And I would like to suggest here, if you have thoughts on dividing that out, it just really doesn't seem in line if we're trying to retain people, and we have the issue of hiring, putting a lot of investment into training, and then people leave, and we still have vacancies. So, it doesn't make sense to me why we would put over $100,000 of taxpayer money to essentially kind of incentivize that cycle, rather than having some of it at least be retention. So, been just kind of kicking around idea, if you were gonna give someone a $5,000 sign-on, what about splitting it in half? So, you get 2,500 sign-on, and then the 2,500 second distribution after whatever seems reasonable, one-year service or similar to our other ones. That doesn't apply to every existing position, just the new hires. We kind of split up that incentive bonus so that there's some retention piece.
So, I, I believe the way it's currently structured, and the chief will tell me if I'm wrong, is they get half of the incentive at the time they're hired and half when they get off probation, which is generally close to a year.
That is correct. So, you already are splitting it up?
Correct.
Okay, because last night, that just didn't seem like that's, that was the plan. But it is already planned to be half sign-on, half after probation.
Right. Yeah, so, I mean, we can have some other internal conversation about that, but we did have a conversation about this not long ago. And we felt like, A, it was important to compete with the other agencies that are trying to hire the same employees we would like to hire. And we, we did not come up with any significant changes that we thought would improve the program. But we, I think we're always kind of thinking about that, right? If we, if we had an idea that would make it work better, we would certainly want to put that in place.
Thank you. Just checking, I think that was getting to be darn near most of my questions for now. Yeah, I think I'm good for now. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? If there's no questions, I would, Chris?
So, Elizabeth, May 27th, I might've missed, missed something or messed up here. Is there an ask of some kind for the partnership between Dream and the Urbana Police Department?
So, there was not an ask at that time. There has been an ask since for $45,000 for that program. And the chief may be more familiar with that than I am, if you have specific questions. There is, after the community service grant allocation process, there is money remaining for allocation to community service grants. So, if it was the will of the council, if there was majority support, I think that just cut out. If there was majority support, we, we could ask-
Did you switch with Dawn? Oh, wait, do any of them work?
I don't.
Mics are off.
Check, check.
All right. I will speak as loudly as I can.
It's active for the people online?
Okay. Then I need to go ask for a minute.
I think, I feel like this one.
So, anything? No, I don't. Okay. So, all right, going back to this. So, there, there is money remaining on the table after the community service grant allocation process. So, if there was majority council support to bring back a grant agreement for council approval to support the Dream program that, that you saw, and it, it seemed like everybody felt pretty positive about it, then we could ask Brayden and Nick to bring back a grant agreement to fund that program. But I, I think the way to do that would be maybe just to do a quick poll so that we know that there's support for it.
How do we?
Chris? Did you?
I mean, well, how do we do the straw poll? Should we do that now, or?
And this is, Elizabeth, just to clarify, I can't tell if this is on or not.
Yeah.
All right, I'll speak very loudly. This is for $45,000 for the Dream, which would hit the books for this fiscal year or next fiscal year?
For next fiscal year. And there's money in the budget that can be allocated, so it's not a change in the budget.
So, we would just roll the money from this fiscal year to next fiscal year, encumber it with, with a, a contract for that specific purpose?
We'd use next fiscal year's money.
Oh, I see.
There's money in next fiscal year's budget that has not been allocated.
Oh, I see. Okay, all right. And the amount was $45,000, is that correct?
Chief, can you confirm they were asking for $45,000?
$45,000, correct.
All right, Charisse.
I guess the question, the question I have, which nobody can hear right now, or so it seems. Can you hear me? Okay, the question I have is basically, would that, would that $45,000 come out of the general fund, or is it already in a different category?
It, it would come out of the general fund. We would just make it part of that community service grant program because they have, they have the systems in place, they have standard grant agreements, they have monitoring in place. So, Brayden and his staff would, would run it through their program, but obviously, police would have involvement with the program as well.
So, this would be an amendment, a budget amendment made up?
No, it actually doesn't require a change in the budget because we have funds available in the budget that can be allocated to that. What I'm saying is, if, if the majority of you want to do that, then what is required is for Brayden to bring a grant agreement to the council to be approved.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chandra?
Now, would that be reoccurring, $45,000, or?
So, when, when, when we give those grants, we generally consider them one-time expenses, but there's a large allocation for the community service grant program that is reoccurring. It could be different, different groups that get the money from year to year. So, the grant funding is reoccurring, but this particular program may not reoccur.
Because I don't want to see it be successful one year, and then they, they don't get reallocated.
Yeah, and I think that would, that would happen through the usual allocation process. I think generally, when we have had successful grant programs, they have received repeat funding. But obviously, we can't even make any promises about what's gonna be in the FY27 budget-
Correct.
-until we have an FY27 budget.
Thank you.
Grace?
Question for possibly the mayor or chief of police on the community engagement program of why pilot this program separately rather than work with the alternative response creation?
Was that for me? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part.
Yes, possibly chief of police, mayor, whoever both would choose to answer, why start this community engagement program separately with the police department rather than work with the alternative response program that we're creating?
Well, I, I sent earlier today the job description of the community engagement team. And as you can see, it's rather robust. In order for us to have the impact that we want, they have to be fully committed to the process. When you talk about alternative policing, we hadn't really established what model we are going to go with. I'm pretty clear on what community policing looks like in some of the things we want to do. But the alternative policing, we don't know if we're gonna have officers or folks addressing barking dog calls, or domestics, or- addressing barking dog calls, or domestics, or homelessness, or mental health. We, we just don't know what our model's going to look like. So there needs to be a clear definitive line between the two programs.
And I'll, I'll piggyback just from my conversations, relationships, and working with Tracy Days in particular and Dream. With what I've seen be successful, you know, in the city of Chicago and other cities that are, you know, dealing with things like this at a much higher rate, they seen, Tracy presented this idea, and it seemed to have been, you know, the, the, the most beneficial in the direction that we were wanting to go, because, again, it's been proven to, you know, be successful, just from the neighborhood outreach standpoint. So that was my direction in.
All right, so circling back for a moment to the, the Dream, I believe you were- do something in the budget, is that correct?
Yeah, and it's not something we do in the budget that would give us direction to have Brayden bring back a grant agreement.
Right, 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 right.
The budget is good, there's money in the budget, we can use this.
Right. Okay, well, then I'm going to put a straw poll up for 45,000 for Dream.
Point of order, is that relevant to any of the budget items?
Elizabeth just said it wasn't relevant.
She said it's not relevant to the budget. That would be for a separate agreement with grants management, right?
So it's relevant to the budget in that it's something that we're going to spend from the FY '26 budget. I guess if we think we can't or shouldn't pull that now, we can ask for a grant agreement to come back, but it would be nice to have an idea of whether that would be successful.
So you could absolutely do a straw poll now on it if it is part of the budget process in a way. Or I also am aware that we, next week, are going to have Brayden presenting a number of grant items anyways, and is that also when the staff report is on grants, or is that the following week?
I think that's July 7th.
Okay. So that also occurs to me as another opportunity, given that it is grants-related. I think either is, is okay.
I, I do think there's some time sensitivity here, because they're wanting to get the, the program going. So the sooner we know, the sooner we can get a grant agreement on the agenda.
All right. Well, I'm going to ask for a straw poll. So for those of you who would like for community grants to write up and draft up an agreement for Dream for 45,000 for next year, give me a thumbs up. And those who disagree, give me a thumbs up. Okay, all right.
I'm not voting with lack of information.
Okay. Onward. Are there any other questions for staff before I ask for motion? Okay, just as a reminder, we are talking about three different ordinances here, so I'd like to take each ordinance on its own. And so I will ask for the first ordinance, which, give me one second. The ordinance I'm talking about is an ordinance approving the fiscal year 2025-2026 annual budget. So it's the main budget for next year. James?
I'll make a motion to forward ordinance number 2025-06-019, an ordinance approving the fiscal year 2025-2026 annual budget to council on the regular agenda.
Chandra, you were going to give a motion, do you want to be the second?
Yes, I could be the second.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Chris?
Thank you. I'd like to motion to divide ordinance number 2025-06-019, an ordinance approving the fiscal year 2025-2026 annual budget by dividing the following items for a separate vote by council. From page 266 of the proposed FY 2026 budget, item 10020201, under police patrol, the two officers for the three-year community engagement team pilot program, the one sergeant for the community engagement team pilot program. In addition to that, the proposed three new additional police patrol officers, and the line item in proposed, in the proposed FY 2026 budget on page 85, 10020201-52930, for the leasing of an office for $30,000 for three years to establish a police substation on South Vila Road. All these items be voted on separately from the rest of the budget.
All right, just for clarification here, I didn't get all the numbers that you're reading. I appreciate all the numbers, okay. Just for the, for the summary, you're talking about the one sergeant that is non-reoccurring for the community, the community engagement team, the three new police officers, which is reoccurring, and then the lease for the secondary location for the police department, is that correct?
No. In addition to those things that you just listed, also the two community engagement officers approved last year.
Okay. And when you say that, when you say you want to divide the question, that is the budget versus everything else bundled together that you just listed, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. And I, clerk, I'm assuming that that is all good.
So any one member can motion to divide. Am I correct in understanding, though, and I apologize if this is redundant, that the items that you wish to be considered separate from the budget are considered as one thing, as opposed to individual?
Good question. I entertain other council members if they want to have, you know, you know, separate votes within that, but right now, I'm just considering it one thing.
Just separate from the whole budget? Okay.
Point of order, do we need a second and a vote on the division?
Nope.
No, a motion to divide is a privileged motion that only requires one member.
All right, Grace?
I would like to further divide out just those items, rather than taking them in one, to vote on one piece being the three additional patrol, one piece being the additional sergeant for community engagement, and one third piece being the two existing community engagement and office space or any other related program expenses. So those kinds of three buckets for patrol, new sergeant, and community engagement.
Just so I'm clear here, I, I understand that you want to have one vote on the three new proposed police officers for squad. You'd want one vote for the community engagement team, which includes the additional, is that correct, or do you want them split? That, that's the piece that I'm trying to figure out.
I, I would like community engagement in two pieces. So one vote for the additional sergeant for community engagement, and one vote for the existing, kind of already approved, two officers for community engagement and the location space.
And what about the lease?
Also with, with the two existing community engagement officers.
Okay, so, so we have, just for clarity's sake, we have the three new police officers, one vote. The one additional sergeant for the community engagement team is the second vote. The two already community engagement people that we approved last fiscal year, and also the leasing space is the third vote. Is that correct?
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay. So now we basically, yes, Elizabeth?
I'm just going to say, just, just for clarity, all of those have many, many pieces, so I'm going to interpret that to mean if any of those positions are included in the budget, all of the associated items associated with those should also not be included.
Yes, yes, the health insurance, FICA, all that stuff, bundled up into one salary line, so to speak. That would be my, I think that's the easiest. James?
Point of order, is the lack of a second and a vote based on Urbana City meeting rules, or based on Robert's Rules of Order?
It's based off of Robert's Rules of Order. Dividing the question is only applicable when there is a combination of items together, like our consent agenda, right? Any one member can ask to remove an item from the consent agenda. In this instance, any one member could request to consider separately an item from the budget, so long as, and here's the biggest caveat, I will use an example of the swimming pool, we can't consider separately putting in a ladder in the swimming pool, because removing the ladder makes it not functional. So I say that to mean that while any one member can say, hey, I want to take this portion out to consider it separately, it can't render something else incomplete in doing so. Does that make sense?
No, it doesn't. I believe Robert's Rules of Order requires a second and a vote.
It does not for division of the question. It is a privileged motion that requires only one member.
I would appeal the decision to the chair.
I would ask legal.
I'm taking a look at the specific provision right now.
It's in our council procedures, I have it highlighted somewhere, because we've had this conversation multiple times, I can try and find it again.
If I recall from a previous discussion of this, the, the question of taking something from the consent agenda, dividing those questions, does not require a motion and a second, just one, one person requesting it, as the clerk mentioned.
I'm sorry, this is not a consent agenda, this is an action being considered under Robert's rules, unless Grace can point to the letter and verse in the Urbana rules for the city meeting. My, my opinion is, we are outside of Robert's rules, which is our governing area, if we are not, if we don't have something in the Urbana City rules that covers it.
So I disagree respectfully, Councilmember Quisenberry, the budget ordinance is an omnibus item, because it is the budget for every single city office. If we couldn't consider items independently, how could you ever change it?
You would motion to amend?
This is a version of that. You are considering items one at a time.
All right. I am, right now, we have one motion to divide, we did not have a second. We have a second motion to divide, just for the sake of curiosity. If Chris made the original motion, is there a second person?
Yes, although I don't believe it's needed, and I would like to go with the clerk's recommendation, rather than-
I'm just asking for curiosity.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yes.
Thank you. Grace also made a motion. Curious if there is a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right. So regardless of we, how we interpret this, these are the two items, although, and I do need assistance here, Darcy, so we had, we had a request to divide the question, and then another request to divide the question. My question is about that. Do we need to vote on, we don't need to vote on any of them, right? Because it's just dividing the question.
That is correct. It may have actually have been cleaner just for Chris to amend his motion to divide for clarification purposes, rather than dueling dividing motions, but-
It, it gets a little complicated.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I'll be frank with everyone, I understand the, the idea of dividing the question. My preference would be if we were going to make any suggestions in terms of changing the budget, that we do it in an amendment style. I think that's much cleaner. But we do have a division of the question at the moment. Elizabeth, do you have enough information for us to be able to move forward?
Do we have enough information to make the changes if they vote on those things? I think we do.
Yes. Okay. All right. So I have a motion on the floor from Quisenberry, and seconded by Chandra, for approval of the budget on to city council's regular agenda. In addition, we also have divide the question. So let us first start with the main budget, okay? We're going to start a discussion on the main budget, if this is the correct order of things.
So I don't know that there is a right or a wrong way to take these options. However, if we are moving on with the main motion, that means that you can pass the budget without those items in it, if you go that route. Whereas if you consider the divided items first, and they either pass or they fail, that determines if they would-
Okay, so it sounds better to talk about the divided question first.
It is entirely up to you guys.
I appreciate that. Okay, then I rescind my earlier thing. We're going to take these three items here. We're going to start with, let's start with the three new police officers, that it was the first vote. Grace, please correct me if I say anything incorrectly in terms of what your intent was in terms of dividing the question. So, discussion. Chris?
Thank you. At the May 14th, 2025 Champagne County Community Coalition Meeting, it was said, quote, "Again, I highlight that figure eight, because it's not just crime, it's people living in conditions where they don't have the best options. There's lack of hope, lack of opportunity, lack of employment, under education, health issues, all that stuff will stimulate crime," end quote. In the May 13th, 2025 edition of the News Gazette, it was acknowledged that issues such as addiction, homelessness, and poverty, quote, "contribute to crime and require more than just a policing response." I agree that long-term solutions must include investments in mental health services, education, housing, and community support programs," end quote. In a document entitled "City of Urbana Comprehensive Community Crime Prevention and Response Policy," sent to the Urbana City Council on February 28th, 2025, under strategic goals, it reads, quote, "Prevention of crime. Development, develop and implement proactive strategies and address the root causes of crime, including poverty, lack of education, and social inequality," end quote. And it also reads, "Support for victims. Ensure that victims of crime, including domestic violence, receive immediate and ongoing support, including shelter, counseling, legal assistance, and financial aid." At the December 4th, 2023-
Chris, I'm going to interrupt you for just a moment. I, I'm going to insist that we have a time limit on everybody's comments, since we are going to have multiple votes here. My goal is for us to be able to end this meeting tonight. I know that last night, it was spoken that the mayor will be leaving town, and I think it's important for him to be here for all the conversations. So with that said, everybody is going to be granted no more than four minutes for the first round, and two minutes for rebuttal. So Chris, I'm just going to say that you only used one minute, is that fair? I think you used more.
Yeah, all right, fine, one minute. So I got three going on this, on this round.
On this round?
And I'll get a second round.
Yes.
Thank you. At the December 4th, 2023 Urbana City Council meeting, Cunningham Township Outreach Team Leader Martell Miller said, quote, "I would say to y'all again, if y'all don't put money in people, y'all ain't going to deal with the problem. So if y'all want to invest this money, I don't think using government violence is going to help us. The reason I say government violence is because you are investing money that ain't going to help the people. You know, put money in a shelter. I'm out here every day. There's 150 or more on these streets every day. Urbana City Council, I'm asking you, please, invest in people. That's how you change a community," end quote. At the June 17th, 2024 Urbana City Council meeting, Janice Walker of First Followers said, quote, "You guys, if people don't have a roof over their head, and they don't have food to eat, and they don't have medical attention, medical, mental health wellness services, this is going to blow up in our faces. It is blowing up in our faces. What does more policing do? It's been proven, it only gets worse. It's been proven over and over and over and over in major cities, that it doesn't allow healing, hope. We can do something different here. We have the opportunity to do something different here. But yet, we want to go down the same old road that we know doesn't work. Why? Why? Tell me why. You don't have to deal with the people that I deal with, day in and day out, calling me, telling me they're sleeping in their car. Can I give them a hotel stay- Can I give them a hotel stay somewhere? I don't make that kind of money, but I do it anyway. We can do better. I know we can." At that same June 17th, 2024 Urbana City Council meeting, Dante Lottz, speaking on behalf of the CU Trauma Realiziliency Initiative at the time, said, quote, "As far as the energy that I put into CU Fresh Start, the Gun Deterrence Initiative that was brought to this community, it had great purpose, but to me was not fulfilled. We had a steering committee of everyone you could want at the table, but individuals were more concerned about how much money I made compared to their probation officers. Why am I carrying these individuals to their court appointments? All that kind of stuff. No one was bringing resources. Access to resources is an important part of this equation. Adding law enforcement is not going to change their community. I'm sorry. We have to figure out how to gain resources." Can I just finish this and I'll let go?
You can finish your sentence.
Yeah, thank you. "Let's stop waiting downstream on these dead fish. We need to get upstream, figure out what's going on. Let's all collectively work together and make this happen."
All right. Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to this matter? All right. Grace?
Could I have clarification which piece we're on and the timer?
We're starting with the three new police officers.
And the timer is how long?
Four minutes. For your first rebuttal, it's two, only twice.
And this one is community engagement?
No, this is three new police officers.
Three new patrol.
Sorry, patrol. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'd start off by saying that I do very seriously care about the well-being of our officers and especially the patrol officers. I really appreciate the information that we received from Urbana Police Department leadership on some of the questions from last night. I appreciate the surveys and some of the video of understanding their staffing. Sorry, if I could have some quiet in my four minutes. I understand that we need to fill those positions. Right now, there are currently 50 officers doing the jobs of 61, which would be our basic staffing minus the two community engagement. And so it absolutely makes sense that people are feeling overwhelmed and under-resourced. I think that we really need to focus on filling those positions, which we will with the 12 new hires that are coming in. We haven't even felt the impact of being fully staffed and having the new positions from last year. We haven't filled the new deputy position or the training sergeant. I think that even under our current staffing, there will hopefully be a huge relief for the department by filling the positions that are vacant, even though there are people in training to come fill them and fill some of the new positions. I really appreciated the survey results, which actually mentioned minimally anything having to do with council or the budget, and mentioned a lot of issues with police leadership, and I hope that we can address that to increase morale and have our officers more satisfied on the job. There was also mention of our officers that they need more community resources to support the people that they're working with, and I absolutely support that. So I think that it's important to maintain what we have and put our priorities on other needs in the community. We could forego a grocery tax, or we could support other community needs instead of expanding the police department with extra things. And I think we need to work with the alternative response because that will hopefully alleviate a lot of their calls for service. Right now, the township has surpassed the monthly calls for service of our police department, and it's really important that we can address some of those calls. Domestic violence is an extremely sensitive situation that needs to be handled with experts and have funding to get people out of harm's way to actually prevent those instances from happening. Having a reactionary system does not prevent those kinds of future things if people just go back into the same dangerous situations. So I think instead of expanding the police department, we could get it fully staffed, address some of the other issues that we can, and we could focus on some of the other things to support community resources and eliminate some of the burden on our residents.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Sharice?
I think what I want to say is I think this is the first time I've heard anybody talk about the police force being fully staffed. The other thing is that my understanding regarding working with the alternative police forces, the alternative task forces, that you certain people did not want the police involved in that at all. That it was to be a set aside from the police department, period. And that is why we were supposed to be doing the, having a consultant to come and help form that and put that in place. That was my understanding. I could be mistaken. But, so now we want the police department to work with the alternative task forces. That's a question I have. Because I've always heard nobody wanted the alternative task force involved with, well, the police involved. They didn't want them to have any say or about anything or anything like that. So the whole community engagement team was to make it easier for people that needed to have something kind of more immediate and maybe a place where they could get information and so on and so forth. That was, that's been my understanding.
Okay. All right. Anybody else like to, James?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to speak to, we're speaking to the division or the...
We are speaking to the division, and at the moment, we're talking about the three new patrol police officers.
Okay, I'm going to speak to the division mainly. Several years ago, I started to consider running for mayor of the city. It was August, and I had an individual reach out to me and asked to talk about my plans, and we started talking. Several months later, that individual came out and said, "I'm going to run for mayor, and I'm going to talk to people. I'm going to listen to people. I'm going to meet as many people as I can, and I'm going to work with them and understand what this city is looking for." I spent the next two years, and it was about a year ago, about this time when I came to the point where I had to make my decision whether I was going to run for mayor or I was not going to run for mayor. And I will tell you, that was a hard decision. But the hard, what wasn't hard was choosing not to run knowing that Deshaun Williams was running. We spent a lot of time talking. He can attest to this. But he spent a lot more time talking to people in this community. And the people in this community responded. People in this community supported Deshaun and his run for mayor and elected him clearly after they had talked to him and got to know him. And so I am against dividing the question in this way because he has brought a budget to us that he has worked hard to develop. He has negotiated. He has looked at all the things he's heard, all the things he's seen, and he's picked a way to go forward. That doesn't mean that we can't talk about little bits here and there, but we're talking about a fundamental commitment that's a part of the budget that he has brought to us that we're going to pick apart piece by piece. We're essentially trying to create a line item veto here for individual council members to pick out the things that they're not satisfied with. And so I'm against dividing this. I'm not against discussing individual things and making amendments on specific items, but I am against taking the first major initiative document that we have been provided as a part of this administration and cutting it up and disregarding the work that has gone into bringing it to us. So I won't vote for it, and I will continue to support Deshaun because I voted for him. I gave up my opportunity to run for mayor for this city for him, and I will support him.
All right. Chris, will you take the chair for a moment?
I will take the chair and recognize Mary Alice.
Thank you. So I just wanted to kind of provide some of my thoughts. It resonates a lot with me, the creation of a line item veto. I hear the passion in terms of Chris and what his beliefs are and where his heart is. I feel like dividing the question in addition to the line item veto is a disservice to looking at the budget. And the reason I feel like this is because right now we're singling out one item with the police department, not taking into consideration all the other things that are happening in the budget. So it's, we're really signaling out the UPD for this, dismissing the fact that we're reserving money for CDBG, we're reserving money for LIHEP. There's a lot of different social services, and it's a complete, it's an entire package. And so I feel like by us doing this in this manner is a disservice to the actual budget conversation. However, we are here at this time, and so we will continue this direction. I don't like the direction, but that's what we have before us right now, and I will take the chair back.
I give the chair back to Mary Alice. Just let me know when I give my two minutes.
I'm going to give Chris's two minutes first.
Just to address the concerns about division, the remedy is to vote what you want to vote. On page 43 of the final report of the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing, and the president is Barack Obama, and this is back from 2015, page 43 says this, quote, "4.2 recommendation: Community policing should be infused throughout the culture and organizational structure of law enforcement agencies. Community policing must be a way of doing business by an entire police force, not just a specialized unit of that force. The task force heard testimony from Police Chief J. Scott Thompson of Camden County, New Jersey, who noted, quote, 'Community policing cannot be a program, unit, strategy, or tactic. It must be the core principle that lies at the foundation of a police department's culture. The only way to significantly reduce fear of crime and disorder and then sustain these gains is to leverage the greatest force multiplier, the people of the community," end quote. This message was closely echoed by Chris Mangus, the police chief in Richmond, California. To build a more effective partnership with residents and transform culture within the police department as well as in the community, the Richmond Police made sure that all officers, not just a select few, were doing community policing and neighborhood problem solving. Every officer is expected to get to know the residents, businesses, community groups, churches, and schools on their beat and work with them to identify and address public safety challenges, including quality of life issues such as blight. Officers must be remain, at last, I'm wrapping it up, remain in the same beat or district for several years or more, which builds familiarity and trust," end quote.
All right. Grace?
Given the short amount of time, I didn't have time to talk about the things that I do like in the budget. Hopefully, we will when we get to that piece. And I will, as I have the right and the obligation to do, think critically about each part of the budget in the best interests of the community and my constituents, not pleasing anyone's personal opinions. I think this is very relevant because this is, has to do with the grocery tax. We're talking about almost $1 million a year with police expansion that would, we could forego and forego the grocery tax. We can't have it all. Sometimes there are opportunity costs. With these three patrol officers, we're talking about roughly a little less than maybe $400,000 a year. Those are opportunity costs of money that could be going other places. This is absolutely relevant, I think, to our community. We saw the case study, unfortunate example of relocation, and the difference that it makes when people have their needs met versus not. We've heard this all around, including from various representatives of our department, that we need to have the community resources that go along with it. So I urge you to please support the officers with what we have, knowing that they will be relieved with 12 other officers coming so they can be fully staffed, actually fill the new positions from last year that they haven't even experienced yet, and support other community needs. I do plan to propose next week, since we don't have everyone here this week, extra funding for victims of violence and gaps in services to support especially people with immigrant services and support some of our other council values. And when it comes to money, sometimes we cannot have it all, and we have to choose. And I'm choosing some of those community services over expanding our police department at this time when there will be changes with the alternative response. We don't know if there would be a dedicated officer. We may want one to three dedicated officers on the alternative response to co respond, not to lead the program, but we don't know that yet, and we'll have already spent the money on additional patrol and community engagement, and there will be no money left for that kind of future partnership. So I urge you to please think about the future and maintaining our current services at this time.
James?
Okay. I'm always willing to say when I'm wrong, and Grace did provide a reference to council rules, which is not a part of the code, but is a guide that was produced in 2020. It does mention to call for the division of the question. It says, no, you can't interrupt a speaker. A second is not needed. It's not debatable. It is not amendable, but whether a vote is required is up to the Chair. It is listed in incidental motions, so it is not limited, I mean, it's not a privileged motion there above in a different part of the table. So my opinion is that the Chair can decide whether a motion to divide the question requires a vote or not. Thank you.
All right. So we've had some conversation. Do you agree, clerk, with whether or not we can take a vote? It's up to the Chair?
I do agree, and in Roberts Rules, this is also reinforced intermittently with the discretion of the Chair, which I feel this is answered to in the council rules, and I do apologize for any confusion that I contributed to in our understanding and operation of this as well. Thank you, James, for helping us figure this out. But yes, I would concur, based off of what was read directly from the rules, that at the Chair's discretion, a vote is required to divide the question effectively, if I'm understanding correctly what the rules state there.
Okay. Well, then, I'm going to call for a vote. We have two items to divide. We're going to take them in order. The first one was from Chris. Chris had asked us to remove the three new patrol officers, one sergeant, two additional community engagement officers that we had approved in the previous fiscal year, as well as the leasing as one standalone item outside of the budget. So I'm going to call a vote yes if you want to divide that question in that manner, no if you do not. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
No.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
No.
Councilmember Bishop?
No.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
No.
Okay.
All right, that motion fails. The second divide the question was in three parts proposed by Grace Wilkin. The first one was for three new patrol officers. That was one question. The second question was the one additional sergeant for the community engagement officer. And then the third one was for the two existing community engagement officers that were approved in this past fiscal year, or sorry, present fiscal year, as well as the leasing. So there were three new votes required. Grace, can you confirm that I said that correctly?
I think so.
Okay. So the question is, should we have three separate votes on all those three items? If you think we should, you should vote yes. If you think we should not, you should vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
No.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
No.
Councilmember Bishop?
No.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
No.
All right, that motion fails. All right. So we are back to the original motion made by Quisenberry and Chandra. This is on the budget. So discussion on the main budget. Yes. Thank you. We're doing four because of the new one. Yep. All right, James?
Yeah, thank you. I do want to speak to one of the items that has been brought to us with regard to the additional arborist and landscape recycling center. I am convinced that the proposal has some merit. One of the things that I'm concerned about is whether the plan for that has been completely fleshed out. To that extent, at some point... To that extent, at some point, maybe not tonight, but at consideration, next Monday, I would like to consider scheduling that position to start later in the year, maybe in the third or fourth quarter, to not expend the whole amount of money in this year's budget and to give there to be more time to design what the position's going to be in a little more detail around that. I'm not going to make a motion to amend at this point because we have another opportunity to discuss that on Monday, but that's something that's on my mind.
Other discussion.
Thank you. I'm disappointed in the unwillingness to consider police expansion as something separate from the budget in light of all of the other expenses. Did want to say that overall, I think there's a lot of good things in this budget. I really appreciate the contingency to supplement CDBG federal funding for three years. I think that's very important and something I very much appreciate. Also, the $25,000 for reparations coalition and continuing a lot of our other community service grants that are going to be increasingly more important with increased need and a decrease in funding for almost all of our community partners and ourselves. I am disappointed that we're considering going along with police expansion because it was put in front of us and keeping a grocery tax and not having money or probably, I imagine, not the willingness to consider some of our other services that could actually prevent very serious harm in our community, as I mentioned with, like, for relocation money for victims of violence and for continuing immigrant services. The township, I, to my understanding, recently lost $350,000 a year that they were using for those kinds of services. I was hoping that we could make a proposal to supplement some of those. I think I still will next week when we have everyone. Don't think we have the votes and no points and just getting it shut down tonight. But it seems that there will also be an unwillingness for that. So just urge you to consider balancing some of our community needs that are very great against expanding the police department and the community engagement position, or program that we just got information about today. Have any of you actually read the whole thing about the program? I have not had time to. I skimmed through it and that's not enough time to consider policies and a whole new program and expenses of $1.3 million for the next three years to start a program that we either won't continue after that, so what was the point of this experimental thing? Or we will continue and we'll have to continue that cost indefinitely. So I'm disappointed that we're doing that and it seems to be undermining what we've worked on, on the Alternative Response Task Force, taking away money that could go in collaboration with that. We do have a facilitator selected for the Alternative Response Task Force. I have a presentation. I put into the clerk to have a presentation from LEAP next week so that they can give an update on where they stand as our facilitator and some very important information about the importance of alternative response and some of the impacts that it can have in communities. And I doubt that we'll be able to fund that entire program for $300,000 a year that we currently have budgeted for reoccurring expenses. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Sharice.
I think the budget is, considering the times that we're living in right now, the unpredictability of what funds we will be able to get and what funds we won't be able to get, I think that right now, what we have is well thought out. I always take into consideration that if something runs amiss, that's why God made the amendment to the budget. So we can always do that regarding anything. The fact of the matter, though, as well, the us and them kind of attitude regarding the Alternative Task Force and whether, and the community engagement thing, which now seems to become a big deal. My issue was, is not about the funding of either of those things, except that my understanding, and no one ever answered my question, was that from the beginning, my understanding was that now we want to have, and I don't have a problem with it, of course, now we want the police to be a part of the Alternative Task Force in some kind of form or fashion we don't know right now. Whereas before, it was always thought that there would be no, you didn't want any police in. So I guess, I guess now there's been a change of, whatever that is. So if in fact, we sometime during the next fiscal year, make that decision that in lieu of a community engagement or something like that, that we want to at least have a partnership with UPD, that is also possible. And I don't see a problem with dealing with that when we get to it. So we don't have to burn that bridge right now. We can deal with it when we get to it. And so there's not any, and regarding the grocery tax, I would also say that there's nothing saying that the grocery tax is just going for police. That's not been earmarked. It's been earmarked to anything to go into the general fund. And I know that we're all paying more for food and we're all paying more for, for basic services, but I have to consider the fact also that we're not the only ones paying more. Everybody's paying more, including the city. So there's a lot of stuff that, you know, everything's going to be more, unfortunately, because of the unpredictability of how things are, seem to be right now. I just want to say that we've got to, you know, have some kind of consensus or some kind of, where we work together to make, make it easier on everybody. And the fact of the matter is that even with all the services that we already provide, it is not a bottomless pit. We, it's, it's an infinite amount of money that we have for everything. And it's unfortunate, but that's the way it is. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Anybody else? James?
Yeah. I just want to make it clear that I am totally supportive of the alternative response process that we're going through. I welcome anyone to go back and look at our budget discussion last year and the year before that and the year before that. Have consistently said that we need to get our police force staff to a level that we don't have burnout and overtime to the degree that we churn people through it. We are not there. We, we may have gotten close. If you check my comments last year, I said I thought we were maybe two or three patrol officers away to have the capability to run a 24 by 7 operation without overly depending on overtime and burning people out. I've been responsible for 24 by 7 operations in my career, not in the stressful, specific training world of police. That's not what I was in. But even in the simpler place that I was in, having people in a chair 24 by 7 is hard to do. It's hard to have that there. And when you have a city the size of Urbana, doing that for the patrol size that we have is hard to do. So I am supportive of this budget because I think we are two to three patrol officers away from being staffed in a way that we don't have the attrition we've been seeing. That's where I stop. People ask, well, when's it going to stop? Well, this is where I stop. This is as far as I'm willing to go. But it is something I've been consistent on the entire time I've been on council. And I have voted this way and I've spoken this way the entire time. And I will tell you, nobody ran against me in this election. So if someone in my ward was unhappy with what I was doing, they could have recruited someone and ran someone against me and said, you don't belong here. But I ran four years ago against an incumbent who was talking about defunding the police and I beat that individual two to one in a primary. There's a reason for that. That's because the people in my ward, while they also are supportive of an alternative response program, they also are supportive of our police and having a police force that is the size that it can work without putting officers on the street on overtime all the time because we're constantly churning through people, turning over. Thank you.
Chris.
Thank you. So the reason that things are costing more is not due to unpredictability. It's due to the greediness of billionaires at the top of our country. Greediness is what's causing inflation. Price gouging is what's causing inflation, period. Also, as Lou, Professor Lou Turner taught us in the Yambuntu Community University last year, there is unlimited money. It's never about the money, it's about the priority. So if you want to build two fire stations, you'll go to the bank and take out as much money as you need, biggest loans ever, and pay as much interest as you have to because it's a priority. So as we were told last night, and it's been my experience over the last 30 years, budgets are moral documents and reflect your priorities. Overall, I'm happy with this budget. Thank you, Elizabeth, and thank you, Don. Overall, I think we're doing the best we can, but it is about our priorities. Thank you.
Grace. I think you had one time already, so you have two minutes this time?
Yes, thank you.
So wait a second. She's got you at 24 minutes. Just give us a second.
And what about questions? Passed a question?
You can ask a question, yes.
Is the clock good?
The clock is not on. Do you want to ask a question or do you want to give a statement?
Both.
Well, let's start with the question and then you can go on with the statement.
Question. Can we downsize a police officer? If we hire an officer and then we say this position no longer exists, can we do that with FOP protections? Like, can we just say your position doesn't exist anymore?
So there's, there's enough turnover that if that became necessary, it probably just happened through attrition.
Okay. But is it possible to say, like, we hire three people for community engagement, after three years, we say this program no longer exists? Bye. You think the Fraternal Order of Police will let us do that?
Yes, I do.
Oh.
Correct. I mean, I think pretty, with the amount of turnover we're having, I mean, we might want to allow some time for that to happen, but yeah, I think that would happen within a year.
So you're talking about, like, if other people left and filling them? That's not what I'm asking. I'm asking if, say, nobody left, or in those three years, like, when the community engagement program might be over, if we're fully staffed, would it be possible to say, this program is no longer what we want, thank you for your time, best wishes on something else?
I would have to look at the labor agreement to give you a thorough answer on that, whether there's a provision related to that. But just as, I'm going to use the example of the end of the SAFER grant program, right? Where we went, we went, we had six additional firefighters in the SAFER grant and in the budget, we recommended we keep only five, right? And that grant ended at the end of February. And so the next, the next time somebody left a position, we just didn't fill that position and then we were at the right number. That would happen fairly quickly.
Thank you. But I would, I would still be interested in kind of union things on downsizing.
So I just, I'm going to interject one thing because I had a question about turnover when I first came on city council. And I was told, pre-pandemic, that a typical turnover rate was anywhere from three to six people per year. That's what I was told when I was asking about turnover. So I don't know if that's accurate now, after pandemic, but that's what was told to me back in 2016.
Thank you.
Okay. So do you have any other questions, Grace?
Uh, no.
Okay. We are going to start the clock?
Okay.
Yep. It's going.
Cool. Thank you. I do just have concerns. I know that it's hard to fire an officer even with good cause, with FOP protections and pushback. So I just have concerns in saying we're going to hire officers and then reconsider down the road. I hear with turnover, hopefully that is fine, but I don't think we're going to be able to just downsize officers that easily. And to respond once again to, I think, maybe Sharice, your question was directed at me about the alternative response, I'm saying that we don't know what that program would look like yet, right? Because we just hired a new facilitator and we still need to convene the task force and come up with a plan for that. We have heard that there is a desire for it not to be led by the police department, but we don't know what that model will look like. I, speaking for myself and some other conversations and research, I think it is definitely a possibility that there would be officer co-response to situations. And I am, hopefully, you know, if this looks like this community engagement program's going to continue on, even without reading the proposal and the policy, I imagine, that at least maybe we can pivot and have them work with the alternative response program if we do decide that's the route we want to go. I would recommend we just hold some of this money in our reserves and give some time to formulate it. I think the task force will be meeting in the next month or two, hopefully. And again, we can hear more from LEAP next week. But I think that we are limiting ourselves in the future by spending money on a separate program that undermines what we've been working on holistically as an alternative response that could have the possibility to partner with police and have new positions, not saying it will or not, because we still need to create that whole program. So at this moment, the possibilities are endless and unknown because we haven't created what that program would look like yet. But the budget is not endless and it is known and it is only $300,000 per year with a little one-time extra.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else?
I have a question.
Yes.
So do you have the, is there anything regarding the Alternative Task Force, like, what the plan is? You have anything like that in writing?
So that would be a question either for Elizabeth or the mayor. I see the mayor stepping out for a moment.
Anything in writing or are we waiting for the consultant to do?
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to know if there was anything written about what the, because I know there's only, like, one council person that's allowed on the, is that you, Grace? There's one person allowed, maybe it's J.
It's Mary Alice Wu. Councilmember Colasetti is also a representative on there, but not on behalf of council, it's on behalf of races.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, she's on, yeah, because of races. That much I remember. So what I want to, what I want to understand is, has there been any kind of programming written down or how that, what your plan is for Alternative Task Force?
Yes. I mean, there, there's a list, you know, of who will be involved and whatnot that was created prior to my time.
Yeah, I've seen the list.
Yeah, after I reviewed it again, I was comfortable with, you know, the individuals on there. And as far as, you know, what I was made aware of today, you know, we have an agreement kind of set up and we're looking to move forward with that. It's just the timing of it just, unfortunately, it happened.
So we won't have any kind of programming or something written down as far as how the, how it's going to go until after we get the facilitator?
Yeah, but you, I get what you're saying. And I, we can provide something, you know, ahead of that and just to get an idea of what we, you know, are wanting or what I'm foreseeing it to look like. Yeah, I can definitely provide.
Okay.
It won't be this week. Well, it could be this week because I'll be gone.
Take, I'm not, I'm not on a, take your time.
Listen, I have four years. Almost one more week. I'm joking. That was a joke, guys. I'm sorry. Sorry.
All right. Any further conversation? The motion on the table right now is to send this budget to the next city council. All right. It's the budget.
Don't you go anywhere. Where do you think you're going?
Are we going to do roll call vote? I mean, we can do, we can do a voice vote, can't we?
It's not fine. Why shouldn't you?
Yeah. All right. All those in faith?
I request a roll call, please.
Okay. All right. Roll call.
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
No.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
All right. That motion passes. Thank you very much. I think the mayor can go get some water now. All right. So the next item is the ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance. So this is the budget amendment number 10. I am looking for a, one, two, three, have enough bodies here. I'm looking for a motion. I'm going to read it so everybody knows what I'm talking about. I'm talking about ordinance number 202506020, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number 10 for fiscal year 2024, 2025 estimates. budget amendment number 10, for fiscal year 2024, 2025 estimates. Chandra.
I'll move approval of ordinance number 2025-06-020, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number 10, fiscal year 2024-2025 estimate, onto city council for approval on the regular agenda.
Second. Moved by Chandra, seconded by Sharice. Discussion. James.
Just, since we've talked a bit, since all of this was introduced, I just want to confirm that when we're voting on this, we're voting on the changes to the current budget to reflect what's going to happen for the future budget.
Correct. This is the one budget amendment that happens during the year. The ordinance is actually written a little bit differently, so you'll see, section one talks about the budgets revised to match the FY '25 estimate column from the budget book, and then the exhibit here is the additional changes.
So it's basically making it look like we knew what we were doing when we made the budget. Right? Because we're changing it to what actually happened.
Not what actually happened, but our updated estimate of what we expect to happen.
Our best guess of what is going to happen.
Yeah, and it allows-
It allows us to move things into the future.
Correct, that's often what the changes are, yes.
Thank you, I'm clear now.
All right, any other discussion? Grace?
Thank you. Just wanted to be sure I was understanding the budget amendment, and so it's, this budget correction is only these VERF items that we previously talked about?
It's also, if you look in your budget book at that FY '25 estimate column, that's part of this amendment. So all of our budgets are being amended to match that FY '25 estimate column.
Okay, so the FY '25 estimate that we're looking at in our printed book is accurate, substituting these VERF ones are different from the book, is that right?
Right, it's all the changes in the book, plus the changes that are listed on the exhibit.
Okay, thank you. And then if I could go back to the VERF changes, I see that the reference page 159, which I appreciate, and found that in the budget, because it looks like the vehicle equipment replacement total fund, the estimate for '25 was $3 million, and '26 proposed is only $486,000. But we're rolling over $1 million-ish from '25 into '26. Is that the correct interpretation?
Can you say that again?
I'm looking at the exhibit in the memo here, and that there's roughly $1 million less of the fund from '25. Are we carrying that into '26?
Correct, and you'll see that on the exhibit for the budget ordinance as well. So you'll see it coming out in FY '25, and in the budget ordinance, you see it going back in for those items that are being rolled forward to FY '26.
Okay, I see. And so just where it says, like on page 159, the very bottom right number that says FY ' '26 proposed for the VERF 486 some thousand, do we add a million to that from the '25 carryover?
Correct, you add all the changes that are in the exhibit to the budget ordinance.
Okay, so it's really 1.4 million rather than .4 million.
Right, and when you get the final budget book, that will, it will be shown that way.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, we're just going to take roll call, because it's all budget. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop? Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. Next up, I am going to read it, because we've talked about a lot of different things. So this is the third ordinance that is related to the budget. This is ordinance number 2025-06021, an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 22 taxation by adding Article 10 Municipal Grocery Retailers' Occupation Tax and Municipal Grocery Service Occupation Tax. I would entertain a motion. James.
I will move ordinance number 2025-06-021, an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 22 taxation by adding Article 10 Municipal Grocery Retailers' Occupation Tax and Municipal Grocery Service Occupation Tax to council on the regular agenda.
Second. Moved by James, seconded by Sharice. Discussion. Chris.
Thank you. So here's when my progressive pals tar and feather me in the parking lot, because I am in favor of this tax. This poor man can afford a penny on a dollar. It's not a big deal, if it buys good stuff that we need and we want. We need revenue. The lunatic in the White House has taken it all, and we need revenue. We always need revenue. All, last night when we were hearing, we ought to, you ought to do this, you ought to do that, all the stuff that Danielle was talking about they're doing, that takes tax money, takes tax money. And the question always on the table is, what do you want to buy with our tax money? I certainly have no, I didn't get in the government business to raise taxes. I'm at sticker shock what people pay in property taxes. It's like two months' salary. I just can't believe it. You know, it's happy day for the government when, you know, appraisals go up 10%, but not for most people. So I don't want to do taxes, but we need taxes to do stuff. I got into the government business to do, you know, reentry services for those coming back home from prison. I got in the government business for 30-day inpatient drug and alcohol treatment for people, for housing and relocating families suffering domestic violence, for youth to have summer jobs in the Park District, making $5,000 over the summer, tenant-based rental assistance for homeless people, you know, small business grants for minority-owned businesses and women-owned businesses, you know, go to Parkland for two semesters, you know, that would be a good use of our taxes. Get some education, go to Parkland College. You know, what about going to the, sending African-American residents to the Fire Training Institute and become firefighters? How about, you know, getting people trained and get in the union and get into a trade? Check on the grocery store, we got that done. Thanks, Sharice. But, you know, and then it's, you know, yeah, it did. But I, you know, I believe that, you know, beyond that, there's a, you know, a need for quality of life. It can't be just roads and fires and taking people to jail. That's just treading water. What, you know, why are we here? What do we want to do? So, you know, I want to do stuff like an urban amphitheater, a car museum, a skate park, a wiffle ball stadium. I know why you're, the guys are against the wiffle ball stadium, because none of you can hit my curveball. I know what's going on, at least in my head. Anyway, murals and sculptures and all that kind of stuff. Point being, you need money for that, you need taxes, and so always the question is, what do we do with the, that's the real question, not, you know, who it hits. I'm telling you, as a poor person, and maybe I'm wrong about this, and maybe, you know, we could repeal it if it was too burdensome, but a penny on a dollar, if it's buying good stuff, why not? So I'm going to vote for this tax, and I'll see you in the parking lot. Thanks.
All right, anyone else? James.
Yeah, thank you, and I know, Chris, there are a number of things we can agree on. Outdoor amphitheater would be one of them, more, more art in the community would be another one of them. So, you know, we argue over a couple of things, but there are a lot of things everybody at this council table agrees on. And a lot of that is, is in this budget, and we do need to pay for some of these things. I have a friend, Mari Orion, who was on city council, I won't say how long ago, she probably wouldn't appreciate that, but we've been friends a while, and I saw her the other day, and I wish I had asked her the question of, how did you do this when you didn't have your laptop in front of you so you could look up interesting facts when things come up, right? And so I'm going to share just a little bit of one of the facts, interesting facts that came up, and that is, the grocery tax as we know it in the state was introduced in 1990 as a part of sales tax reform, because before that, there was a quilt of grocery taxes throughout the state by municipalities, and the state was charging sales tax on groceries, and that was too much. They wanted to raise the sales tax, but they didn't want to do it on groceries. So they abolished sales tax for groceries and created the 1% sales tax as, I assume, a compromise to not give everything up. And so it's been around, you know, for 20, 25 years, and, and I appreciate, Governor Pritzker is someone I really appreciate. If you, if you don't appreciate where this state is as far as spending and budget as compared to where it was just nine, 10 years ago, we're in a much better place. I will vote for Governor Pritzker if he runs for governor again. I will vote for him on any other ballot he shows up on. But I will tell you, he abolished this grocery tax because it didn't cost his state spending a thing, because it was being passed to municipalities as part of a bargain of rationalizing the whole picture of sales tax. And so that was, it was, it made sense in the pandemic, right? It was, I understand why they did that, and I understand why he's choosing to do it now, because it's a, it's a thing to give back in light of other things that have had to go up in cost. But it is, it is a, I mean, Chris put it as a penny on a dollar. That, that is a challenge for some people, but as the research that was shared earlier shows, the, the impact on that lowest 20% of income earners is smaller. It's still a thing. I don't want to say it's not a thing, but I'm going to, I'm going to support us continuing this tax on the municipal level, because that's what it funded before when it was a state tax, and it'll continue to fund things in Urbana. If you want to tie what those dollars are going to, you can do that, but it goes into the general fund, and the general fund supports everything. We have hugely successful new business in Urbana, in H Mart, and sure that property is now contributing property tax at a level that it was not, that helps, but all of that commerce is going on, and when the grocery tax would go away in January, there would be no benefit to the city from that aspect of what's going on. And I'm not comfortable giving that up. I do acknowledge the challenge that it makes, and we should invest in other programs as has been suggested here. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Grace, have you, you've spoken twice, I believe, on this? No. Sorry, we're on the, we're on the third one here. Okay, go for it, Grace.
Thank you. I agree with some of the previous statements. I think that there are some, you know, obviously, revenue advantages of the grocery tax, especially for some out-of-town shoppers, some of our maybe rural neighbors who come and shop at some of our big stores, that makes sense to capture some of that. I also agree that if we are going to continue this tax, that it should go towards things that are really serving the community, and I understand that things are going into a pot of money and being distributed. I also understand that this budget is proposing about $800,000 a year in more police than our baseline and than previous years, which is almost a million a year in the grocery tax. So we're saying there is a choice to keep our budget balanced if we were to not expand our police department, and we could forego this grocery tax entirely, or we could put another $800,000 towards something else. So this is, I think, another point where there are choices, and you are choosing this route by going with what's proposed. So I will be voting no for this, because I don't see the expansion of community surface, community services at a rate of police expansion that would justify continuing this grocery tax on people.
All right, any further discussion? Sharice.
I'm going to be voting for this text to, one thing that Chris and I do agree, we agree on, well, we agree on a lot more than we want to say that we do, but, yeah, it's a penny per dollar. And we've been doing it for several years, but the other thing that I think about is in, is, and Chris and I disagree about the fire stations, but the, I took a tour, and our fire stations that we have now have less square footage than my mom's house. So I don't have a problem with that. I don't know, and it's not been earmarked, and this tax, I doubt, has ever been really earmarked for any one thing, or any one program, or any one department. I think that it is, is something that is as needed, and we're lucky to have it, because most of us do not have that in our budget. And when I think how tornadoes have gone through some of our neighborhoods and ripped up trees and ruined people's houses, and how much money we have to pay in overtime for public works to come and cut those trees and get them out of the streets and get them out of people's way, because these are city trees, and then we replace the trees. Grocery tax could very well be going for that, too. So there's, there's a lot of, because it's not earmarked doesn't mean that it's, that it is earmarked for one particular department or anything else, it just means that this kind of gives us a little leeway for the unexpected. And that unexpected can come in several different ways, we don't know. So that's why I will be voting in favor of this.
All right, thank you. I think everybody who's wanted to talk has had a chance to say something. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop? Councilmember Wilkin?
No.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. That's on to the next city council. Elizabeth Dunn, thank you very much for your time this evening. The final item on the agenda for tonight is council input and communications. Would anybody like to provide council input?
Well, I'm just going to say something real short.
Sharice.
I do appreciate last night, everybody that came and gave, gave input regarding this whole thing that we do every year. But I really would like also for, for a lot of folks to think in terms of what the balance of the three, the three different branches of government. And there's so many things that the city gets bogged down in, and saying, when people say that we don't do this and we don't do that, and that is because it's the city and it's not judicial, it's the city and it's not private business, it's the city and it's not, you know, one of the other branches of government. We, our job is to, is to first try to make sure that the city in and of itself works, and that we keep our citizens as safe as possible, and that we make sure that we do our best to try to do it on an equitable level. That doesn't always happen either, but all we can do, and even our oath says, to the best of our ability. It doesn't say that we're perfect, it doesn't say that we're going to do everything with perfection, but once again, I say thank God for that amendment thing that we can always amend. So I thank everybody for, for being interested in this, but I also want other, I also want our citizens to be informed properly and to be educated properly on what it is and what services we do provide, because we do provide a lot of services for our citizens, whether it be in way of city council or Cunningham Township, which we are all on the board of. And Cunningham Township does do quite a bit to help people in need. So I just want to thank our citizens for coming out and taking in interest. Thank you.
All right. DeShawn, do you need to- DeShawn, do you need to share something?
Oh my goodness, I'm sorry. All right, so yes, we, just before we get out of here, we do have a couple of Juneteenth events. Wednesday, June 18th, we have a four-powerful hour program. So from 1:00 to 2:00, there's a presentation of Juneteenth, 1865 and local Urbana area history. At 3:00 p.m., interactive workshops and hands-on activities for families. 4:00 p.m., there will be a family, a panel discussion. The title of that is the Legacy Effective Communicators Required. Next will be, and that will be all at the Urbana Park District, the HAWK, the Health and Wellness Center. So hope that you all are able to attend. Obviously, you don't have to, you know, spend the entire four hours there. But if you want to, you know, please feel free to do so. So, yeah, thank you.
All right, with no further business before this board, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.